Good evening and welcome to the November 12th practice select board meeting. If you'd all please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one liberty, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And set on October 20th.
The first order of business is to review and approve the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions to the agenda?
I guess the only thing I want to mention is under the fire station update that the report I got, you'll see is the price has increased and I am looking for approval to sign that so that they can do the work.
Okay, so action on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion will be in order to approve the October 28th select board meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment? Just here for the fire station. Any good stuff?
There's no showing.
That's, feels like it's coming. I just wanted to mention the people that had bought the house that got hit on East Street. They really cleaned it up and I think that even though the structure is still there, the property is like such a huge improvement.
Definitely.
It's nice to see that and I've seen them out there working and so it's amazing. It makes it look like a new piece of property, so.
Looks bigger.
Looks bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is good.
So. All right, and we had a nice turnout, you know, we had a turnout at.
For Veterans Day.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we had a few, a ceremony over here at 11 for Veterans Day and there was eight of us there plus Pastor Tate. It was nice. It was, we'd like to do more next year, I think, just to, like other towns, kind of make it bigger and more, bring more people in somehow, so. But it was nice. It was a really, he did a good sermon and stuff.
It's hard. It seems like everything's kind of going on at the same time. They have it being at the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and Rutland and other places.
Yeah.
I think everyone's like around 10, 11, or you know, 11 o'clock.
Right.
11 o'clock is the key to have it, 11:11, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. The bills have gone around and everybody has opportunity to sign them. And so, fire station update. So everybody should have had updated 3D imaging on the table, which are pretty with pictures.
And they did this because the person that we want to do the grouting had the first report that was done, the readings, he couldn't really tell where to grout. He wanted an engineer's expertise, so we brought in Deboin King again, who is the one we've assigned to this project. And then they had this button corporation did the scanning over in the 3D to try to show where the voids are and everything. And I think it, I think it kind of more like set the other guy to ease, kind of going, okay, I get a little better idea. If, as you could see, the price jumped almost double, which I was like, you know, oh, what's this? And so he explained because he did get the new drawings that he has to bring more equipment in to drill deeper, get all the areas and stuff. So he said if we approve it, he can start Tuesday. And his, he's doing another railroad project, I think, or something. So he can do Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then the following Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if need be. But he said that price could go lower depending on the number of days he's there and what he actually finds once he starts putting it in, so. But he feels like once it's in there that it's, it's going to be a good remedy to, he thinks that they can fix the problem.
What is the timeframe going to guarantee?
I don't think they ever gave us, I mean, they've kind of come back and forth with, you know, anywhere from two years to could last five years, you know, 10 years.
I don't think anything that's gotten in writing says a.
Right.
Guarantee.
Well, I'm going to keep telling you that time is that we have to work on when we go put 212,000 pounds on this floor, that we're not going to come in one day in 18 months and.
But two, two years seems to kind of be the common theme number of when we spoke to them the first time to this time. So you've seen all the same documentation. So, but that seems to be the, what I've heard. That, that seems to be the common number. Yeah.
This is definitely a thick, looking at the reports, definitely temporary.
Right.
Yes.
But it could be temporary for 10 years.
Yeah, well, but that, yeah. But that, I can't imagine that they would guarantee.
You're pushing off the endeavor.
Yeah.
Well, I figure I'll be gone in 10 years, so I think.
Yeah. But I don't see them guaranteeing the lot, you know, any kind of real life of it because, man, looking at the pictures, you have no idea what's going to shift to make another void or something like that, so.
That's what kind of concerned me a little bit was as we start to grout film, what we pushing around and where's it going to go?
Right.
Yeah.
It's certainly going to have to make us be, or make you guys be much more conscientious when you're moving the trucks in and out. And, you know, we may have to see what it would cost to do just, you know, a scan to kind of be proactive. So if in two years that you feel like something has happened or you, something has shifted, maybe that's the cheaper way to go. Have it, have them come back and scan it again and to see, did things move? Are there new voids or like that?
It'd be, it'd be a good buzz to get the engineer to estimate once the floor, so we can actually take notice to see if it's shifting, moving, dropping or whatever like that.
Once it's grouted, once they do, yeah, yeah.
And I can follow up with the engineers tomorrow and actually the guy doing the grouting too, just to see if they could actually kind of hold it. I know, I know nobody likes to give estimates as, you know, the fix.
Low end of the spectrum.
Right.
Anyways, we're not looking for, oh yeah, we'd be good for 10 years.
Right.
If they're saying two to 10, it's two years.
Yeah, exactly. If they're, if they're pretty certain that's going to be at least two years and that's helpful, so.
That, that'll kind of give us an idea of where we progress and.
Yeah.
How, how progressive that's going on.
Right.
Yeah.
As most of the board probably knows, we don't even actually have all of our trucks in possession right now.
Right. Yeah, dude, he told us last.
One of the decisions is that we send that truck down the road now to the vendor for the trade and eliminate that extra 50,000 pounds going back on that floor.
Sure. And that seems like maybe a conversation that when they're here, we have with the engineer and see what his input is on that, so. I mean, I think whatever decision is made between you and him is the board's going to, I would say, support.
Good question. And of course, I'm here reading that this is no warranty. Likely to be subject. But we're not.
Well, that's just it.
Yeah.
Right, so yeah, I guess that's the big question.
Because I mean, right now, since we put all four trucks back in the bays, technically two of them aren't even ours. They're already guaranteed in contract to the vendor to replace.
Right.
We've got to pay all the children because they go through the floor. That's going to hurt worse than everything.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that certainly seems like a viable conversation and.
Yeah, I would have that conversation with them just to see how soon you could turn those trucks over or, you know, lease that truck. But also I think that, like when they're there, you're more than welcome like to go and talk to the guy who's doing the grouting and stuff. He's fine with that, he said. But I, right now, it's our, it's our only option.
No, I agree because we need to get back into the structure.
Right.
Yeah.
That's, that's really not an option.
Yeah, and it's our cheapest option at this point too, so.
I mean, if we were to quote, build a building, it would be a five years.
And where would we be doing that?
Well, there's a possibility.
Yeah, but.
You're a ratio of the job.
Yeah, but a lot of that property is kind of the same. I mean, maybe it's not on top of a, an existing building, but they're on top of.
Under a lot of standard, standards, they wouldn't allow you to build on, build anyways, you know, maybe let's start over.
Yeah.
I will just say that there's a good chance that their geology is not going to be there much longer.
Right.
So that's, that's potentially a better area than the, the other, the other schematic showed that it goes to the west side of that between that exhibit and it goes this way.
Yeah.
Yeah. 280 feet. So it's, but that's a, it's a more solid foundation of that.
Yeah.
Sheet.
And that building definitely would need work and.
I, you'd be very odd if it was, it's, I mean, not a quarter million, it's a move on.
Yeah, well, on privates have only really been done on the south end, so, you know.
Just a shame if it's not.
I mean, it was like, trying to break water, just talking, even if you had a settlement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're still three to five years before you're moving into it.
Right, and it does seem.
In the during meantime to get.
Yeah.
Well, and then the secondary question is, then what happens to this building? Because if we're saying the building doesn't have stability, and I understand putting trucks on the floor is different, but we're saying that there are some structural issues.
Over green.
That, that seems like that.
Huge question.
That building almost has to come, I, I mean, down as well, because how do we?
Yeah, I, I mean, you'd certainly have to get a structural engineer instead of buying it up. But for a commercial property where you're not putting 200,000 pounds of trucks.
Right.
They can span.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think if, I mean, I would think it makes sense that once we get this done, that if you're having those kinds of conversations that, you know, you start including Judy in that, because, you know, like you said, so let's say best scenario, it's four years over there. But we need to be starting ASAP to look at where our options are. We're going to bond, you know, we have a possible bond or probable bond vote coming up for the wastewater treatment facility because it's been 30 some years before we've done, since we've done anything there, so. You've got to do, so, you know, to start thinking about what does that look like in three years? Do you have another bond, you know, looking? And then just being able to forecast out what does a building look like 10 years from now? You know, what, what are those trucks are bigger, equipment's big, you know, what that is so that you're building for the future rather than building for the, yeah, status quo. So. I mean, I would certainly encourage to those conversations to start, you know, in conjunction with, with filling the voids and, and getting things moving, so.
All right, I'll sign this and send it to him tomorrow and then I'll, we'll see if any one of them can give me some at least, you know, of timeframe, you know? Just for a sense of security for.
Like you said, I'm looking for that low end.
Yeah.
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 10 years may not be a guarantee, but if we can at least get two to three years out of it.
Right, you can have something in the works.
That gives me an idea of timeframe.
Right, and maybe he'll have a better idea once he's done doing the grouting too, you know?
Yeah. And I think the other thing we have to do when we're looking at, you know, creating a, I mean, not just a fire station, but an emergency, whatever, is looking at, you know, what kind of governmental funds might be available to us in terms of grants or things like that, so. You know, a few years ago, they were out there, hopefully that's going to come around again, so. You know, reaching out to even our state senators and then, you know, reaching out to the Bernie and Welch's contacts like in Burlington and like that to, to have them work with us, so.
Yeah, there are, I mean, I reached out to the league and I reached out to the state about grants for this and they said there's really nothing for fire, but their USDA is more apt to give you loans for fire departments. So I can reach out to them. There are the congressional funds, which I reached out to them this year for something and we didn't get anything. But they usually have money and of course, we didn't have the fire issue at the time. And I think the fire department would have qualified. You know, but again, they.
But you kind of got the shovel ready.
Correct, and that's probably required some sort of plan in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they want to know dollars before they commit.
Yeah.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so.
The other option, you know, where we came about putting a new floor in. That's no longer on the table. That's not an option. Because this was going to be the temporary.
Right.
Right.
You know, the grouting and then they also were.
Right, that'd be an option.
Best option would have been, you know, dig it out, put the.
Right. And that was an option, but that was a costly option.
Yeah.
This is.
But is that still an option going forward or that's?
If this doesn't take?
Yeah, well, I think he's talking long term.
Yeah.
Beyond the possibility of the next step.
Right, right, right.
Three years was the dig out and rebase and.
Yeah.
But I think the other kind of issue that they had talked about is that that building really was a building that was built for present rather than looking to the future. It's not an ADA compliant building.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, there, there's lots of issues with it and, you know, as we all, if you've been in a building, you've made any kind of changes to make it ADA compliant, once you do one and you've touched that, then you're kind of, it becomes like a chain.
Well, I mean, that will come in the next step because anytime you file permits for any sort of modification in the state's mind, now 20% of that project has to be dedicated to ADA improvements.
Right. So now.
Back at whatever cost to dig out, rebase the floor and support it, take that project and move 20% higher because now you're going to put all that money at the ADA and hope you can do it for that amount of.
Yeah.
So I think we'll, we'll move forward with this and then I think what we just need to do is a lot of research in terms of you checking on the truck and then checking on next steps. If this is good for just two years and the next step is it new flooring? What's that look like? What's that cost? You know, and what, like you said, it's, it's not going to just be the floor. It's, it's going to be the ADA compliance. Plus that whole, the, the void in the ground doesn't stop at the station. It goes out into the driveway too. So I think you're talking much.
Into the neighborhood.
Yeah. Right.
And that's been twice, right?
Well, we put about eight tons of compaction before we tried to do the void.
Yeah.
So it was on void, but it's.
Yeah, I, I think we probably, you know, obviously more conversations, but it seems like the most fiscally responsible direction is to look at, you know, once this is done, contracting with an architect. If, if we know, like, let's say that's an option, that property over there. You know, we really kind of need to know what the property option is before we start doing that, so.
I mean, you're going to have an architect involved even when we go to do, if we do.
Yeah, but the floor.
Full ex, floor, because everyone's going to decide what we can afford within the ADA requirement.
Right. Right.
They're going to come in and say, you're going to be doing this and all this is an issue too.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And that's where you decide at that point what becomes more cost effective.
Yeah.
Patching old building? Or building new?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You definitely got around to some issues with, with stuff required for a fire station. You don't think you have a footprint to do that now because you're talking about separate equipment rooms, separate gear room, showers. Yeah. You can have mission shops.
Yeah.
Probably don't have a footprint there. We barely had, I believe, when I first moved in there, that's we would have trucks that big. No.
Right, well.
Can't open the door, suit my doors on it, that's right.
And that, my question, like if you send the other truck down, it's going to the vendor. The new truck that's coming in, how much heavier is that truck or is it?
With the tankers, well, the tank's about 38,000 pounds. So you're probably pushing 70, 80,000 pounds on that one truck.
Yeah.
Because you're asking that truck now, it's going to carry 1,800 gallons of water as well as all the fire equipment. And instead of being spaced in two bays, it's going to sit in one.
Yeah.
All the actual trucks we have right now?
We have the four frontline apparatus, one pickup and one ATV.
Four bigger units.
Yes.
But we'll be having.
Yeah, currently, one, the ladder, two tanker pickup and a ranger. Two and a tanker will put in as a package deal to buy the new truck. And we're doing notes and trade. And if we send two down the road sooner, it takes that load off the floor.
Right.
Plus it's also taking it out of reference city by your current space.
Right. Going way back in history, I don't remember vaguely remember the company store. Was that closer to the sidewalk?
Yeah, that's where, that's where the town hall was.
The company store was.
Yeah, was it closer to the, the actual road or sidewalk? I think it was.
Yeah, because I think the front stairway came out further into the driveway there.
Yeah, it's not a huge difference than the southern one, when you, when you look at the pictures.
Just throwing in that hole.
No, they're both equal. I think the southern ones, inland ones are both equal. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well.
Hey, got to start somewhere.
I'll reach out to Derek tomorrow and see if he'll pick it up and lock, have time to ship it to.
Right.
Just for keeping with 95% of the equipment that's on it.
And then I would just let Judy know so then we can take it off.
Yeah.
You know, insurance and all those kinds of things, so.
And I did let them know your truck's in Rutland, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's now in the back there.
Yeah, and the others at the garage.
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll, if I hear anything from him different tomorrow, I'll let you know.
All right.
Let's see that ECI is now company owned. Company.
Oh, but instead of individually, you mean, like as a?
Yeah.
Right.
Boy on.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and do you?
Yeah, they say big, very experienced.
Just give the number that we're, that you're going to sign for, that we're going to authorize you to sign the contract for.
$43,800.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. So a motion will be in order to authorize Judy to sign the contract to start the grouting for $43,800. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So yeah, I think you guys should definitely, you know, somebody should be present when they're over there and then I think once it's done and, you know, we get through budgets and, you know, town meeting or whatever, we pass the bond for the wastewater treatment plant, we can, you know, by then we should have a better idea of kind of where we are. Maybe he'll have, they'll have a better idea over there and we can, you know, look at contracting with an architect firm and, you know, start looking at what you see are necessary to, to build out.
That would be huge this time.
Yeah. Yeah, and I definitely think, yeah, I definitely think that you two and I don't, I mean, I don't know what the stat, how, what the lineup is over there.
I'm a rush.
No, I didn't want to see that out loud.
You've mined resources.
Um, yeah, should definitely sit down and be part of that. And then, you know, we'll have to figure it out from there. That's what we've always done here in town, right? Figure it out. So. Yeah.
A lot of chicken barbecue and big on like.
There you go.
Every Saturday, chicken barbecue.
That's right.
Next one year.
Yeah, let's speed drive through.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, could be worse.
Give you some of the old building.
Chick-fil-A or something.
Okay, all right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
For coming and hopefully everything goes well, I say, when they arrive.
Yes.
Hold your breath when you're packing those trucks. See you, guys.
Thanks, sir. All right, so we have the green, green, ground, maintenance ordinance.
Hopefully I gave you the right one this time.
Yeah. So any discussion?
Just one item.
Sure.
We've had that discussion in the past, section four, C. Is the intent impacted by the time of the year when it is completed? You know, if I mow on May first, I've satisfied the requirement of the ordinance, but it doesn't meet the intent. And the answer was no, it doesn't meet the intent. And then you talked about putting a day, you know, should we put a day in there or we're just not, you know, saying, oh, we don't need a day? You know, if a person mows in May, you know, they mowed in May and.
How about if you did it, so, like if you mow in May, by now it's going to be.
Well, that's it, that's what I say.
Otherwise, it's going to be like this until the end. So what if you put it like a month in the middle of the summer, has to be mowed by July 1st?
Or after July.
Yeah. 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 That way it's like mid growing.
It's going to grow, but not.
Right.
Right. Well, by, it has to be mowed once. No, it has to be mowed once after the.
After July 1st.
Because we don't want to mow it before. We want to get to a certain, there should be actually a window.
Right.
The mowing must be done at least once during July 9th. That's what you want.
You could just say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, just narrow it down and say it has to be mowed once.
Yeah. And it seems like people that have fields like that, like.
What's a good example of an open field?
Well, like Bridger Run Fields, I think, or.
Or the one down on West Street?
Yeah, that open lot on West Street.
By Protovansky?
Oh, Protovansky too. Or Helen used to have that one kind of across from the house there on West Street too, which we.
Yeah, that's kind of happened.
Well, they put birdhouses up and I don't know if that changes the. Center.
Put birdhouse, yeah, yeah, you have to mow lawns.
Now, it's like a.
I just wonder if you put it on length, you know, not to exceed, you know, 10 inches or something or whatever.
Well, there was some, there is something for lawns.
Six inches.
Yeah.
But an open field is not a pro, you know, like a.
Right, yeah.
So that's why I think, I think just saying must be mowed during July or August every year.
Yeah.
Or you could say it must be mowed between July 15th and September 1st. Because if you want.
If you want, that you want, that would be small.
Or how about between July 15th, August 15th? I think in the middle of the summer, because once, otherwise you're going to have the whole summer, it's this high, then fall comes and it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think most people that are doing that are.
This is privately owned property.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
It says in seat statue, I think, that they're supposed to be mowed once.
I mean, your property's personal too, but we make you.
Well, they're not saying when you can and when you can't, they're just saying that it has to be mowed by that time. It's more of a, I would say like a fire and safety kind of issue, like, you know? Because a lot of them that are the open fields are not, we're not talking about like, you know, grassy kind of, they're kind of, I don't know.
So does it sound better to say must be mowed by August 1st rather than July or August or, you know?
By, but again, get back to that same scenario. By August 1st, I'm going to mow again, when it's nice and sharp. By, but again, get back to that same scenario, by August first, I'm gonna mow it next, when it's nice and sharp. Then I've satisfied the requirement, then you can't come to me and say, however, you have to mow, and I'll say, Judy, I mow May.
I mean, hasn't it, do you feel like it's been an issue?
No, I don't. I don't, but I'm just saying, you know, suddenly you come up, Lisa and say, yeah, I've done it and.
Yeah.
You know.
I don't know, I could check on that.
I mean, I just feel like currently the people that own the properties that it.
My mother-in-law had to mow because there was a lot of property back in the motel.
Okay.
Yeah, August first.
It doesn't seem like anyone's come in complaining about it, so.
No.
What if we just signed this and left it and we and we viewed it? Um.
Okay.
Like this time next year.
Well, you know, too, that with Burt, you say, hey, uh Helen's in there by Protovansky's, plus that other field that Helen Helen Castle nephew owns.
Yeah.
Those two, Burt, you say, hey, a couple times a year, they they don't.
That's cuz I think probably the owners that own the one there by Protovansky's are out of state.
Yeah.
Well, I thought earlier in the year, we had a discussion that we weren't gonna do agricultural property, you know, we were.
No, that's not agricultural, that's that's a lot. That could be technically a building lot, that's that's between where the yellow houses and Protovansky's, there's a lot on Rust Street there, as you drive, that that's not agricultural.
We won't make Burt mow his thing.
No, 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 no. All right, so.
Okay, so, oh, just send it.
Could a motion be in order to approve the ground maintenance ordinance as presented and we will review it um October twenty twenty-five, if there are any um complaints or any complaints. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. All right, you wanna move on to Rutland Regional Emergency Management Member reappoint?
Yeah, so we have to reappoint every year and in the past Kevin and I have both been on it, I've been um as the management, emergency management director and he as emergency services um are the. As like the the next in command, um the emergency services voter. So if I'm not available, he votes, if if I'm, if he's not, if he's available and I'm not, vice versa.
So motion to reappoint you and Kevin.
And the reason I didn't fill them out ahead of time, cuz in case somebody else wanted the position. Cuz um Kevin definitely wants to be in it, so um and I I was willing. I was willing to let someone else step into that role if they wanted to be, so.
Well, it seems like Kevin is a good one and he should probably be having communication with you, it seems like. Likely connecting to me, unless someone is still strongly about it. Yeah, so do we need to know, well, do we need to know what we're calling your?
Well, it's a proxy doubt, so the emergency management director or designee and then.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay.
And then um Kevin will be the emergency services voter. And then it needs approval by the chair of the select board.
Well, we're gonna have approval by everyone.
Yeah, but you have to, only you sign it.
Oh, okay. So a motion will be in order to appoint Judy as the emergency director and Kevin as the emergency services voter. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I didn't complete it yet, if you're comfortable signing, I won't put anybody else in there.
Okay.
Sneak one of you guys in here. Thank you.
All right, um salt quotes from Appalachia and Cargill.
So I late Friday after I did the packets, I also got one from Eastern Salt. Um, east, I just wanted to give you the figures, um but Eastern Salt was at eighty-six, eighty-one a ton.
Eighty-one?
Eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cent, eighty-one sixty, eighty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Um Appalachia was eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And Cargill was eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. But we have gotten salt in the past from Appalachia and we really, really like it. They have excellent service, their salt is all kept in-house, so it's all dry. Everything we get doesn't have moisture, isn't compacted exactly.
Who who is the state when we found to know?
Cargill, and they're getting a much cheaper rate than they gave us.
Hmm, of course.
Which I don't understand, cuz I always thought they gave the state and then we got that same figure, but.
But in all words, that salt is much better than Appalachia. Because it's still getting done.
And I've I've never heard of Eastern Salt till now, so um.
Yeah.
And the only difference between, like, if we ordered, I think we put in for seven hundred tons. The difference between Cargill and even being less than Appalachia, savings is a hundred seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, I I I'm fine with going, I I mean, if you have an existing um you know, relationship and are happy with them, I don't see the reason for a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
That is option that.
Yeah.
Right, right, and they're great, you know, I mean, they deliver on time, you know, and stuff, so.
The clog up the. The same version.
And they're they're like, they're personable, you can call and actually talk to them and reach them and stuff, so.
Yeah, okay. So are you looking for us to give you action or that's something you have?
Right, I just wanted to run it by you.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, regional marketing initiative from Cedar.
Uh, that's something the Chamber of Economic Development, you put a bit of luck's bomb and you have been great supporters of our regional agriculture initiative for eight years now, I think since the beginning of the project. Um, but before I do that, I wanted to, could I mention a couple of different things before the regional marketing? Um, considering you probably already get to see Judy, but USDA puts on a grant opportunity.
Thank you.
And Judy sent me the contact information for um.
Bigfoot?
Bigfoot, yes, ventures. They're a little bit non-responsive, um, since it's your big building down here. Um, I contacted Judy to see if she had any word on planning for that, um. For us, it looked like a great place for housing, um, so I reached out. Courtesy of Judy sending the information, I've heard nothing back from them, so I don't know if you heard anything or.
But the Housing Trust did a study here and said that we did, the the reason they didn't purchase the building was because there wasn't the need and because the services that we have were not what they were looking for, so that study should still reside with them.
But I think that was before the mandates came down from, you know, Governor Scott and stuff, saying we need X amount of housings in Rutland County.
Well, that's true, but our services haven't increased here, so that that would be, I guess, slightly concerning, I think. We we don't have a store. So, you know, we have a bus that comes twice through town.
Four times a day.
Yeah.
Comes and goes.
Yeah. So.
Well, just wanna let you know, we reached out and.
Did you, were you able to contact anybody there or talk to anybody? Yeah, they're kind of crickets.
Maybe it's an asset, maybe they don't at this point, I don't know, so um. But just those two things, also I've had talked with Ben, the Preservation Trust about the Marble Museum here. Think you're gonna hear more about that in the future, what the Preservation Trust plans to do. Um, I don't have a lot of details, so I guess we're kind of waiting, I know you reached out and talked to them as well, um. Because we're very interested in first what Zion is doing or not doing and uh appears appears to be more not doing at this point than doing. Um, so, um, again, great asset. I hope that by virtue, and I think I correctly come along, Judy, but I think Zion Rovers now owns both the Hem building as well as the Marble Museum. I would hope combining those properties might make it more valuable someday for some reason, um, but we'll have to see how it plays itself out. Um, certainly not what we expected a couple of years ago when we were sitting here suggesting they were gonna do something, so. Which leaves us to regional marketing. So, you'd like to start?
Well, would you like to pass these out? So we are entering our ninth year of regional marketing initiative, which is Real Rutland. Basically, we advertise Rutland County all across the United States to attract people to come fill the jobs that are open here and move here, hopefully plant their roots, have families and bring the age of the population down in your mom. Um, so you take a look at, well, is everyone familiar with what we do in the program?
There, we have some new members.
Sure, exactly. Who you are and and what you're proposing, only because our staff may be late.
All right, so we are visiting from the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Regions, we represent all of Rutland County. And it was a merger between the Chamber of the Rutland Region and the Rutland Economics Development Corporation four years ago. We, our regional marketing initiative is Real Rutland, it's a concierge program. So if someone's interested in moving to Proctor, they will click on our website and say, hey, Carly, you're the concierge coordinator, I'd like to know more. So she'll meet with them, she'll get to know them, find out that one spouse is in the medical field, the other spouse is a teacher, and they have two kids who like to go rock climbing. So she'll then connect them with a concierge volunteer, who's someone who already lives here, works here, who's also in the medical field, has two kids around the same age and loves to rock climb. They go out, they meet each other, it's your first friend when you move here. And they get to ask those questions about what is it really like, what do you like about living here, what are the challenges? We also answer questions like what are student hires and what's home heating here, because if you live in Texas, you don't know about that.
So it could be anybody that's moving or looking to move or relocate would get a hold of the service and then could give them a better idea geographically what fits their needs.
Yes.
Whether it's financially or even a business wise, I mean, if a business says we're looking to go to the Northeast and we could say that Proctor is a perfect talent for this specific need. Okay, so that's.
A pretty welcome item, and what we're doing is we're reaching out in advance and saying, wouldn't you like to come here? And Olivia will describe one of her recent um projects with that, which has been quite successful in getting in front of people. Um, the ultimate goal being that we have Brother Regional Medical Center right now looking for a hundred and twenty-five employees. And they can't find a hundred and twenty-five employees, they pay us a certain amount of money towards this whole goal of getting more, getting more people to come here, knowing that once they get a hold of somebody to nurse or whatever, they're gonna time into this program and say, go talk to Carly and Olivia because we wanna keep them here. And people need relationships in order, a job's a job, but relationships in your community are the biggest thing to keep people here. But.
If anyone does say that they wanna start a business, Carly connects them with Cooper Babbitt, our operations director. And then from there, he's able to meet with them, talk to them about grants, opportunities, buildings that might be up for sale and connect them with Dancy Shuttlerworth at the Small Business Association Club, so.
And we're revolving loan funds, so people needed loan funds. We encourage them first over to a bank, and the bank said, well, you need twenty percent more. We consider ourselves the lender of last year's work, so people will come to us, I need twenty thousand dollars, and then we'll talk to them about that. And helping them get the other loan as well, yeah. Whole bunch of intertwined things, like the place spaghetti, well, let's go, this puts them on a level, it sets them up for a presentation to whether it's Judy or the board or anybody down that uh with the help revaluing, it looks, you know, what what it is they're actually looking for.
They can connect them with employers.
Should try to get that support and that uh information, okay, well, thank you.
Do you guys keep stats of like, um, when people wanna house, like, like, could you say, like, Proctor, the five houses were sold and we talked to like three of those families and getting here, do you have any kind of that?
We do keep track of where people are moving to. Um, but, yeah, so yes, yeah.
So do we see those stats, because for all the years that you've been coming here, a question has been, what is Proctor getting for the money that we've put in?
That's right in here, there's a fact.
In this little pocket?
Yes, in this.
Okay.
And Proctor is right on the list, uh, we advise them locations. It doesn't have a number next to that one, but I do know.
So what is that that we're looking at that's saying?
On the other side of the page. Is pounds that they moved to Proctor's on there, but on this front side that has leads. So these are people who say, I'm interested in relocating here, um, so as of October. Let's just go twenty-one to twenty-three, we had just over twenty-seven hundred leads come through our website. Um, and as of this year, we've had thirty-nine people move to Rutland County. And we still have other families who are planning on moving by the end of the year.
And one of the things that it would be placed together are weekend getaways, and there are two weekend getaways per year that we support. And part of that, you wanna talk about the social media presence and how many people get out of town and where you send them?
Yes. So after, well, we run a campaign to, I want to feed people who are interested in moving here. And the weekend getaway, we reached just over eight hundred thousand people across the United States. We have, it came down to the areas that we know people are interested in moving here from, so places like Texas, where it's really, really hot, and they're trying to escape that, and places where there's flooding, um. And part of the weekend getaway is basically an all-inclusive weekend with a focus on relocating here. So we set them up with realtors, they can first schools and meet other people in the community. And part of, one of the fun things that they do is a scavenger hunt that takes them to every town within the county, so they can get a feel of do I wanna live in Proctor, do I wanna live in the heart of downtown Rutland, where can I see myself? So Wilson Castle is Proctor's spot that they'll go to and.
That doesn't really bring you into Proctor though, Wilson Castle, I mean, like, before you sent them to the Marble Museum when the Marble Museum was closed, so there's lots of places in town, we have the highest, we have the highest fault, we have a marble bridge, we have a lot of things, we have two signs that are on the state historical map and this in here is Proctor. I mean, you're barely over the Rutland Town Line to be at Wilson Castle. Um, I I I don't wanna be, I I but I have felt like for some time, even when I sat on the other side of the table, that Proctor really, I'm not sure the entire benefit we receive here, and I know we consider to allot funds, but like, when I'm asking, like, how many people, how many people are saying that they wanna move to Proctor? How many people have moved to Proctor? And then does the data show, like, so they bought a house? Did they stay six months or did have they stayed six years? So the data points are interesting, but like, sitting here and looking at the money we're putting in, the data points for a community are not what I would be looking for to be fiscally responsible.
Well, excuse me, two weeks at a point, you okay, you you directed to a castle. Uh, and to your point, that is, I think, one of the first properties on the property line.
Yeah, there's a, there's there's one private residence over the line and then the castle.
I mean, you mentioned our our skating rink, our pool, Bieber Con, uh, what, as you said, the the falls, you know, down there, that's a whole. We, we've got a lot of.
Recreation was a big draw, you told us like a couple of years ago when you were here. We have a lot of things here that we have spent time, energy, and local local volunteers have spent time to better, um, to have more year-round kind of um outside recreational opportunities. So, um, it would be nice, I think, in the scavenger hunt, that we were highlighting something that was more community-based like that.
We're very open to whatever you would like the heaven mixture to be. Um, we tried to pick things that are uniquely different and uniquely special to a community. If you don't think that is what you'd like people to see, tell us, we'll we'll have them stop wherever you'd like.
Maybe because we grew up, or I grew up here, I mean, to me, I would be more interested in recreation, and I'm not, I'm not.
It almost has to be for pond or, I don't know what you.
Well, we have people, you know, during leaf peepers season, people come from all over and stand on that bridge and take pictures. I'm not directing them there, you're not direct, but somehow that's where they're coming, that that's where they're interested.
Driving through towns, they're going through and going to different towns throughout the entire county.
Well, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there a fee? Are we pending a fee?
We are.
Yes, okay. So that's what I'm getting out of the.
What we originally did about eight years ago, we went to every town in, in the county and asked for a dollar a person from the town to help subsidize this. The ultimate goal being, although that person may not move into Proctor, they may move into Rutland. But that person may be the nurse who is going to be the person who's going to help you when, or someone else when they go to the emergency room. We want to make sure that all the positions in the community are filled, which I think helps the entire town. So are you uniquely getting ten houses sold every year in Proctor? I doubt it. Um, from this program? Have people come to the program in Proctor? Yes. As many as Rut- as Rutland? Absolutely not. But we hope that sprinkling people around and the people that are coming will be filling those positions that are needed in all the major industries.
And this has been going on for eight years, you said, going into our ninth year, working with this town.
Working with this town, we just came from West Rutland. Um, we're going to go to, um, the AMBI on Thursday. We've been to Fair Haven, Killington, Brandon, so we're, we're making rounds again, um, to the towns that have been supporting us over time.
And the information Lisa was asking, is there a report of some kind that's, you guys give us once a year that says exactly what Lisa was asking?
We don't have, I just think we probably should at this point, we wrote down adds to the number of people moving in Proctor, so if you add that number.
Just data point, is it?
It would be from the past few years, some of your data was a little. Whereas, well, aside, we're just keeping very good data this time. Um, as of a few years, Carly gave us great data, so she keeps the rate now and some. We can never.
Yeah, it would be, I think, be very interesting to see, you know, where, what's going on and who's, who's willing to get, uh, the town going. And what we're seeing, of course, to elaborate more, I guess, on Lisa, is there information that we want to update to hand over to?
Well, the information they have is the information I wrote for them to put on for Proctor because there was nothing on Proctor prior. So we submitted it, so, um, which was a little disappointing for a number of years. But I think like when you first came and you're talking about the marble building and housing, I, for me, like, you talk about making the community healthy and, and prosperous, or Rutland County. The bigger issue, and we see that seeping in now from Rutland, from other places into Proctor are, is the homeless issue. And we've been dealing with that. I, Julie, Judy deals with that, um, on a weekly basis, you know, that we have people residing in our woods and, and those kinds of things. So I'm wondering, are there, are there any programs like within your, um, group that are looking at that or you simply looking at more the worker coming in, buying the home and being that kind of community member?
Well, you brought up obviously a good issue. Um, Rutland County, I think we might all agree, has been ass to shoulder, part of the burden of homelessness than quite frankly, any other county in the state. And the reason for that was we had hotel space. And we had hotels that were willing to allow the state to provide subsidies. Those hotels, none of you would stay in now. And those hotels will need either be taken down, quite frankly, or renovated significantly. That was a bit out of the municipality of Rutland's control or Rutland Town.
Sure.
Because the owners allowed that to happen. The state does not currently have a plan for the seven hundred plus people that are considered homeless in Rutland County right now. They don't have a plan. Mayor Dunjust has been working very diligently with the state to say, is there a plan? And we've been there as well. And one of the pieces that we are working on is more housing. That's why I first mentioned the housing here. We need housing of all kinds, all levels. And, uh, it's a difficult problem. And if you're in, if you know a contractor, and if you get a contractor to come to your house, great. Because there aren't a lot of contractors that are able to do the work that needs to get done and the cost for building is exorbitant. Um, and that has, it's gone down a little, but it's not, uh, it's not gone down enough. We really need the state to help us at this point with the homeless issue. Um, do I see them stepping up right now to do that? Not necessarily. We just had a change in leadership at the, uh, up in, uh, Montpelier. Um, we'll see if anything changes as a result of that. Um. I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I guess my follow-up is like, i- it's great people want to move here and they can fill the jobs at Rutland Regional and we all are excited and want that nurse or doctor to be there when we go there. But we've also heard even within our community, you know, we have a lot of people that are moving in from out of state, buying properties at these kind of higher levels, which are not allowing our kids to come back and buy in the town. You know, and so I wonder if there, is there a consideration when you're, when you're doing this? Do you, I mean, is there any thought about that or no?
Well, the thought is to fill the organizations that employers have.
Sure.
I think the time, as you look at these pictures, um, we say we put everybody's name in the hat, and we pull their name out of a hat. You're going to find that there are families that we're inviting to come here. Because we want their children to come with them. Our schools are losing population. It's creating issues where we can't afford to do the construction and renovation of the schools that we need because we don't have enough people to pay the taxes to do that. We need more kids, we need more employees, and so our target is that right now. Is that helping our, you know, I've got a son and buy a house in West Rutland. Yeah, hurry time buying a house.
Yeah.
Eventually you did find a house. Not in Proctor, but in West Rutland.
Yeah.
It's, we have to do everything all at the same time and that's really what we're working on. You have been with us for eight years. We appreciate that. Um, our budget primarily comes from business and industry and right now a grant that we received from the state. The remainder is coming from our towns. And so our budget's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, of which seventy percent comes from business. And those are the logical targets. You know, all their names, Rutland Regional Medical Center, uh, Velco, Cello Waste. All of the businesses that really are the booyes of our society. If you would like to be involved, we'd love to have you be involved.
So what would this coming years pass be to towns?
We've asked Proctor for sixteen hundred and forty dollars for the last eight years. I don't know if that is the number, that's what you have, but I don't know how we landed on that figure. Um, but that's been the figure and I think that you're historically put that into your budget. Um. I also understand when it's time to change the cover, that the cover comes first. And so there are things that have to go into the budget, have to go into the budget. We hope that by having more people moving in, that the tax pie is this big. If we can get more people, we can slice those pieces a little bit more.
Have you had any communities that have said, we're building the budget we'll see? Or has everyone said, we're building the budget and you're definitely going in the budget?
Some put it in the budget and some actually wrote on it. So Rutland County, they wrote on it.
Right.
Um.
Brandon usually votes on it. They, they do line items, yeah.
Brandon does it not, but that, um.
No, oh, Dambi.
Dambi votes on it. Little Town Spring votes on it. Um. The others may put it in their budget, yeah. We wanted you to know we appreciate it very much. Allows us to get Rutland County out in front of lots and lots of people.
The information that was, we were talking about here is, is that something you can get uh, within, you know, thirty days or?
So right now we do a report from the state and I go back, have the information there.
Yeah, so we totally separate the board, but.
I would assume so. I mean, even just for the town Proctor, if that's possible.
Yeah.
That's good.
Um, you'd have to extract some information, ensure, learn off any formulas and figures that come into play for that. Um, just for the amount, you know, the population we have in the town, but it gives us an idea of any progress that, that may be happening or it'd be very interesting to see. You know, what's, uh, what's going on, you know, what, little bit about it's, you know, and, and it sounds very positive. You know, approach, uh, I don't know what you guys are doing, so. That would be just my, my point of view is.
Yeah, yeah, I can disperse it to everybody.
You were going to say, what does here do? Right now our laser focus is bringing more people here. There are lots of different committees going on from real estate to business development. In your packet you can see that there is the HOPE Co-Works. That is where our office is. It's a twenty-two thousand square foot business incubator, um, co-working facility. You might recall hearing the Opera House downtown, um, Merchants Row. The Opera House is the co-working space. And what people do in there is they may have businesses that they work for from in California. But they're working out of the HOPE Co-Works right now because there happens skiers. And they are able to do their business in the HOPE and then you go skiing because they live where they live. Um, we have just in our annual meeting, we were at Paramount Theater, we had four businesses that pitched on stage and we're giving some big checks for the work that they're doing. We're hoping that those businesses will stay in the region and that they will grow in the region. Um, we're focusing on tech-enabled companies, anything with computers because they tend to be higher-paying jobs and those people have disposable income that will help our restaurants and other small businesses if people have time and money to spend. So that's what the HOPE Co-Works is all about. Lots of different things happen at all the same times.
Yeah.
Including the ma- major space where there's twenty thousand square feet of really cool stuff. If you want to go down there and see what's happening, they've got laser cutters and three D printers and welders and um, and again, it's a place where small businesses are being populated. Some, there's a guy down there, we were talking to folks in West Rutland, there's a guy down there that makes really cool knives. The guy doesn't know how to market at all. But he can come to the HOPE Co-Works and go through our Co-Started Program and that will help him with the marketing. We'll introduce him to Amazon and how are you going to market that and and fabricate things so you can ship what you're, what you're making across the nation. So those are the multiple layers of things we're kind of working on.
And how do we get that information to, um, include, let's say, in our town report? Well, I think it's nice that we get the little letters from people and say, this is who we are, we were this, now we merged together and now with this. But those are, that's the kind of information that if I'm in my twenties, thirties, you know, I'm past looking to be ingenious. Um, you know, with young families or maybe trying to start a side business to know that all of those kinds of things are available to them there. Like, maybe I can make, you know, pins, great, but like you said, I rather, other than giving them away, I don't know how to get rid of them. But, you know, to, if we had that, something like that, that kind of shows, you know, a one-pager that says, this is what's available there, if there are costs associated with that and like that. To me, that's more informational to put in our town report than listing, you know, that you're running on a hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget and it's coming from here. That's real information that people, you know, in our community can take and, and put out there because I, I, I personally, I mean, I've heard about this more because I'm involved in the schools, but if I was just, you know, like, uh, I, otherwise I don't really know, other than reading it about stuff in the Herald, you know, that those things are all possible. Maybe everybody else up here did.
Great point. And just yesterday, I sent to Judy a list of, and it's called, uh, something about vital numbers, if that's what I called it.
Okay.
And it will show if, if you would like to put that in your annual report, please feel free to do that. It shows the money that we brought in the county.
Sure.
And it's shown things about how many people went to the Whoopee My Festival that we put on and those types of things. So it's all vital numbers, which is what I think. What you're requesting. Yeah. Um, now you're requesting it about this, absolutely just by the ask and we will see what we can put together. Um, and also in this package is our, our annual report and it does talk about the committee structure we have. We have about fifty-five different people working on our committees and our board, all really pulling in the same direction.
Our annual report also has a section about the linen in there.
Okay, great, great.
Did you work on these? Many copies?
Right, well, I, you know, it's like if you can put stuff in that, everyone's getting it at the same time, it's town reports become a historical document, then you can just say, hey, go to your town report, there's information in there. It's a, it's a more condensed kind of resource, um, document or a book like that you can send people to, so.
We appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Open any questions you have. And if after we leave you have questions.
Thank you.
If you don't feel free.
Uh, no, yeah. We already had some other ones. They came and they loved it.
I'm not so much appreciated, so. Thank you, Beau.
Thank you.
You too. Stay warm. It's cold out there. I know.
All right, a motion will be in order at seven oh six to move into the Board of Water Commissioners.
So.
All those in favor? All right, Judy?
And everyone received the sanitary survey that I
Yep.
had sent out. So, um, and that just had deficiencies, which we've already taken care of one of them, actually probably two of them. And then the guys are already on it, um, arranging for the testing that needs to be done to qualify, to make sure that we're up to standards, so.
We must have some people that can do the tank and whatever you want to file or.
Yeah, yeah, they know who to contact and they have to come and do it, yeah, and test, they test them.
Be empty, go empty the tanks out.
I don't know how they actually do the testing. I think they test them just to make sure they're operating properly.
Of course, water is to buy, but we do it, uh, like, here and there, like, you know. I think it's some of what they do with cameras, but I think we've had one or two times that they've brought them in to go.
We did have an issue up on, um, Cliff Street with one of the properties up there that has, um, they were one that was delinquent and we shut their water off. And then, um, they came down for an agreement, um, and we turned it back on. And now the, um, pipe is leaking. And unfortunately, the shut-off is not even on, it's, I don't know who designed this water system, but the shut-off is the one that you had mentioned, um, uh, behind the property. It's actually on someone else's property at their front door. And that's where the water is leaking. So, um, I went up and looked at it today with them. Cause I couldn't visualize the way, I'm like, how in the world could the water leak there when the house is in front of it and the water doesn't run uphill? But where it is, is at that point and then it runs down to this person's house and that's where the water shut-off was. So, um, they're gonna, luckily, they didn't think they could dig it up themselves because the, when they saw the location, they can, so I don't have to get a contractor. So they're gonna do Dig Safe tomorrow and start digging that up to see, um, the pipe might be galvanized. So that could just create more problems because they could repair a piece and then all of a sudden the next piece breaks because it's so fragile. So they're hoping to just repair it, put a new valve in and cover it up, so. But, so those pe- those houses will probably be shut off for a while while they work on it. But it's, it's popping up everywhere.
So it's leaking at the curb stop?
Yeah.
You know?
So it, it could be because the valve's so old that it's never been touched, you know, never been opened, never. Yeah, so.
Okay.
You know, where it says, all servicing documentation must be contained in a lot of systems, operation and maintenance manuals.
Uh huh.
You know, uh, Rob and Nick, you know, I don't know if they have to go through these manuals to see the frequency that anything has to be uh, service, you know, or is there a floor where they can look at it and says, you know, that's due, that's due, that's due. You know, is it just, they gotta go through all these manuals or is there something simple that they can? You know, is it just, they gotta go through all these manuals or is there something simple that they can?
No, I, I believe there's a, there's a method to, you know.
Okay.
To, to it all, right.
Just overlook?
Right, right.
Okay, so there should have been something there that.
Yeah, and a lot of them they're aware of. There's, you know, they get these things from the state saying this is due and they already, they're aware of it already and they're working on it, so, yeah. Yeah, so a lot of these things are more like, you're deficient, cause these need to be done, but they know the timeframe and stuff, they just haven't been done, so.
But haven't been done because they weren't aware that it had to be done or?
Well, sometimes they weren't aware because they didn't, they didn't know a problem existed with whatever they're pointing.
The frequency, that's not a problem. Those are set.
Those are things that have to be done, yes, right, right. And there are, there are timelines, like one doesn't have to be done till next September, but, you know, could they wait until next July? Yes. But they'll get it done, cause they're ordering all the testing upfront.
But I was just wondering if they had some tool that would notify them that, hey, you've got the service that's coming up. You know, or do you have to go through all the manuals?
No, they don't have to go through all the manuals, no, no.
Yeah, I just wanna make it easy for them.
Right.
For them to be able to look at something and say, oh, okay, these are things that we have to schedule in the next.
And they're, they're pretty on top of it, cause when I get something, I contact them and they said, yeah, we already got it, we know it, yeah.
All right, anything else for Board of Water? All right, we'll move out at seven eleven and a motion will be in order to enter the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
The move, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Judy?
So the Operation Management Emergency Plan was submitted October thirtieth to the state. That's something that, um, Rob's been working on with the state or Nick's been working on with the state. So they got that filed on time and it, that's been a process, like ongoing process to get that prepared. And they got it sent in, so I just wanted to make everybody aware of it, cause it was on the radar for them.
All right, anything else? Then we're gonna talk about the, um, uh, flyer handout.
Yeah, I guess that's, I don't know, break, perhaps, like, when you get it out to people.
Yeah, they had a good, it got it to me, quick turnaround, you know?
Any issues? Anybody seen any glaring, like, no, that shouldn't be in there, or we should have this in there, or concerned about anything that's in there? Numbers, dollars?
Well, it's got some good information, I think it's kind of spelled out, you know?
Yeah, I think it's, if you didn't know, this is like a nice kind of like, this is what we're talking about, this is what it looks like. And then if you have more questions, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we got sure there's some people that have no idea where this is and, you know, nothing about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, I think in the last meeting, you mentioned doing something that, you know, cause I did put it out at the, um, elections too.
This?
Um, no, the first one that they did, just to make, bring people aware, which I don't even know if anybody looked at it, but, um, I didn't, I thought you'd mentioned in this, when we send this out to put, you know, look for next, you know, a town meeting, you know, reference that there'll be a meeting in January about this.
Yeah, so I think that's more based on like when, um, Aldridge and Elliot, you know, could come down and maybe have a little more concrete, because by anyway, we're gonna have to, if, if you're gonna do a bond vote, things are gonna have to be pretty much
Right.
Done.
Right.
We know this is what it is, this is, this is what, you know, grant, all that.
But that's what I'm saying, do you want in this fire to include the next step? Would there be more information or just, we'll just have a meeting?
November, I think we're good enough just saving this and then I think.
Have them down for a meeting?
Yeah, and then maybe we, we could, um, yeah, we'll just have to blast it out on everything. I don't think if you put something on this and send it now, that it's gonna hold, in my opinion.
Everybody's gonna forget it.
Yeah.
You're right.
Okay, all right, then what I'll do is, um.
I, I would just send this and then I would get them to give us a, a date. We blasted out there and we talked about it in every meeting till that.
Okay, so I'll get this, I'll make sure I get a clean-up copy and, um, get it printed and figure out how we're gonna address them.
Okay.
Just occupy the family?
Huh?
Just occupy them?
Yeah, I didn't know if we, like, every resident without an address? You know, or if we have to address, you know, like we do.
Well, we have a bulk man, we must have a bulk.
We do, yeah.
So we might be able just to.
Yeah, and they categorize them all, like, certain areas in town, so everybody gets one, yeah. I, I can go talk to him, cause he's great over the coast.
Yeah, 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 and if we could get it out, you know, if we could get it out before Thanksgiving, I think that would be good.
Yeah. But let me know when I can come down and hook the phone, that'll give us some.
Okay, you go door to door.
It'll, it'll be Turkey Day conversation, right? When you flush, after Turkey. No, I think this is great. I like it, so. All right, um, all right, a motion to move out, uh, Board of Sewer Commissioners at seven fifteen.
The one second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, so we have the Sheriff's Report in there. Did you wanna give a little update from the Sheriff, Judy?
Yeah, so I talked to the Sheriff about our, um, campers and, um, they have been going up there, they've asked the people to move a couple times that they can't camp there anymore. And then I've been notified that people have seen them going back up there afterwards, so they do return. The officer was just there, um, la-, was it last night? And he took another deputy with him, went around all the trails through the woods, they couldn't find anybody. But then he heard they're back, so he said he will go there tomorrow and check it out again. Um, I've talked to, you know, I, again, social media, um, you know, postings does not help anybody in this town or anything. And people just go on there and get people all riled up, saying, you know, these people are out camping, they, they could be dangerous, but, you know, all this stuff. And people just get all up, you know, like, up and, even though most people don't know where the sand pit is. But, um, so I have reached out, ev- every call I've gotten, I've reached back out to the Sheriff to ask them to go check it out, please. They've been great, monitoring it on a consistent basis. Um, there's only been two people up there, the same two, all the time. Um, so, you know, I don't think it's a growing thing in terms with the colder weather coming. Um, they haven't done anything ba- bad to anybody while they've been there on the streets or anything. I think they just get the bus, go to Rutland probably for more meals, come back, and then try to settle in again. Um, so he is on it on a consistent basis, so I just wanted everybody to know that we are handling it, we are addressing it, and we're trying to take care of it best we can.
Do you think the cold weather will send them, and again, I don't know how it's almost, what they do in the winter time? You know, I mean, it's obviously a person can't live in a tent over the winter, I don't think.
Well, it's been that the vouchers come back in the winter and they get vouchers and go back into the hotels.
A lot of those don't start till, I think.
December, right?
December.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that what it is, they actually get vouchers to go to, yeah. And then stay.
But I think the important aspect is that Judy has been so vigilant about this, reaching out to Rutland County Sheriff. I mean, it, you know, um, that if people are concerned, they should be calling here and speaking with her. It should, you know, social media, it, it's not helping the situation. We're not monitoring that on a regular basis, so if you have, you know, a concern, this, she's the person you need to be talking to and she has been in contact and, you know, there's only so much we can do, so.
Thundering?
What was that?
Springing.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, I think you, yeah, you're doing everything that you can, and I thought it's something eventual that I was thinking, or you'll, you'll, you'll have to go.
Right. Yeah, no, I have, like, from the minute I got a phone call, I contacted them and they were great. They said, we'll go check, and they did, you know, and then they said, they even told me I've gone back the next day, so.
But I think you're right about social media, people just live for social media and that's how they get by.
Well, it gets people alarmed too, more worked up, cause they're, they don't know what's really happening and thinking, you know, so.
People who do the posting, it's their intent.
Right.
Without giving everybody the information.
Yeah, and I'm, well, I mean, people can always call me, come see me, you know, you know.
That's what we should do.
Right, and, and, and that's, that's the correct procedure for things to be addressed appropriately, so it doesn't become a, you know, an unfortunate situation or something like that, so. All right, and then one other? Did you want to follow up about the, did you have anything about that thing from Sunday night?
Oh, I, yeah, um, so Sunday night, I don't know if you, um, were aware that there was an incident on South Street um, with, that involved the state police. Um, they apparently, I didn't get all the full story, I don't know if there was a high-speed chase or what, but they ended up on South Street. The, there was a camper involved and it went off the road, like, not way off the road, but into the grass slightly. Person took off, I believe, on foot. Um, there were four state police cars there, an ambulance, which I was told had nothing to do with that incident, so I don't know where they were coming from. But, um, they searched for the person by, with dogs and flashlights. Couldn't find him, called off the search, thought that possibly the person went someplace and got picked up by somebody else. Um, and so they said if there was any more questions, they'd reach out to me. Cause I called the state police about that, cause the sheriff gave me all that information and I called the state police.
Yeah.
Um, and apparently it was some male individual, I think. Um, so, but I don't know, I should mention the other, about the female.
You could, and, and the one that people posted about, um, the one on Gorham Bridge or Florence Road over there, they did actually um, touch those two people.
Okay.
When they were doing a foot chase from them or whatever, and that would have been.
Yeah, see, I didn't hear about that.
That was Friday, yeah.
This, so this was a?
Yes, someone, like, stolen a car or something, jumped out, two, two guys, and they were over Gorham Bridge, Florence Road over there. But they did, they did, um, capture them. It seems like a lot of activity in the last.
I'm gonna have to get that social media.
Well, and I think what's happening is, I think a lot, what's happening is people are getting pe- different people's posts and combining these as one incident, like in Florence, there was a high-speed chase, ended up on South Street, that. And so I think they're all getting cleaned.
Yeah.
But there was. Sunday night, it was just weird, all of a sudden you're setting your house and there's state police in your backyard and the dog.
Oh, they were up in your?
Oh, they were up in our neighborhood, they were all over in people's backyards, they were up with the dog, they were all, yeah, all over up there. And, uh, but you didn't, I mean, they didn't knock on the door or anything, you didn't know what was going on, yeah, so.
And the next morning, a, a woman came out of the woods, right at the entrance of the town.
Yeah.
With her hair all dismantled.
Yeah.
Um, a big oversized shirt, leggings that were all ripped and socks, no shoes.
Coming.
And coming towards pro-, walking.
Yeah, so.
So I didn't know if there's a connection, cause that's right where the other camper was.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, it, you know, all of a sudden that four miles, what, it's gotten really, you know? It used to seem like it was more like this and now it seems like it's a little bit, but, you know, it, and it is true. I mean, as while, you know, tribute, we, you know, Chitting County, they sit down, what did they say, like, four hundred or something like that homeless people to be housed down here and you know, now they've displaced them and.
But that was because the whole town said they had rooms available. See, the, the, the whole place is in.
Well, I, I, I know, but, well, you know, the problem is now they've moved them all out and there's not any place to move them to and this is, you know, there, there is a certain degree of empathy, you don't, you know, we're all human, we don't want people living, you know, in tents in the woods, but there also is that we have to think about our community and safety and things like that for, for our citizens. And I just think the message is that that is what we're doing. We are, we do have Rutland County Sheriff, they have been very responsive and, uh, and we're not the only ones experiencing that problem, so, you know.
More and more and more.
Yeah, yeah, so.
More when you're coming here, you know, because the benefits of Vermont versus.
Yeah, that's.
So maybe that'll be a more killer change.
Yeah.
All right, uh, town manager's report.
All right, so, um, I contacted the State of Vermont regarding the board's decision about the grant application um, with Zion. Um, I sent them a letter. They explained to me that that was good, but I needed to send another letter to the director of the program um, explaining what the vote was. Um, and I also attached the bills along with it and sent it to her, so she said, that's fine, and they were gonna upload it. So I just, I'm, this is just, you can pass one around. I, that's the letter I sent her, just so you see what I sent her, and they were fine with that. I haven't heard any more. Um, I might have to put it, I, I do a final progress report, so, but I've heard nothing from anybody, so. I just wanted to share that with all of you, so. Um, let's see, covered that already. Oh, we talked about the radar signs. I looked at the previous quotes and they were like fifty-three hundred to six thousand dollars. So the only alternatives to see, and I don't think the Sheriff Department's had any, but I know like Rutland City Police does, but I could see if state police do as far as temporary radar signs, but.
And what about like, uh, when you, the places where you can like buy, like, um, you know, like we were gonna redo this and get rid of the chairs, the, um, surplus, do the police have like a?
Oh, surplus, um, I don't know if they do or not. I think they might, as, as far as signs like that, I don't know, I don't know anything about that, but I know like vehicles, furniture and stuff there, but.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe ask the sh- the sheriff if that's something that, you know? Cause they have several different kind of models of those
I know.
Signs all over, so they must be updating them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know, even through town, though, here, they, they fly, you know?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And someone passed me, like, I passed Lefons before I entered the cemetery, someone passed me going out of town. And I was just like, what are we doing, you know?
Well, one day.
Eighteen chairs. I was next to me, just pull on my driveway, started, started trucking behind me.
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
We do drive kind of slow.
Probably somebody had to pass Lisa.
You're getting old, Albert.
One night, I heard, I, or one night, one day, when I was here, I could hear like screeching coming right through here. So I jumped up and I looked out and this car went around that corner and I think it was going so fast that it, the whole back end just way, I was like.
I don't know, you read those reports where they're going eighty-two, eighty-seven, yeah.
Yes, it's scary.
But it's not, yeah.
There's some all the way down the road through. That really high street.
Wow. They must have known he was coming, because someone said over, you know, the pull-off where they fish?
Yeah.
That one, uh, one steak cup was packed and backed in there. And then right at the entrance, I was just going into Rutland, it was like five-thirty and I was at the light and this, it was dark kinda. And this car went by me and it pulled out, it, it just went up the road a bit ways and it pulled over and I was like, I wonder what's wrong? And I couldn't see it really, and all of a sudden they shut all their lights off and I was like, why would you pull over right there and shut all your lights off? And, um, s- someone else had seen them and they backed up into that, uh, area, so they must have been, got called maybe, and said he's coming through.
I don't know that, let's give social media props, but whatever that was that they posted that on, that, that's a post every single thing, if you were just reading, huh? For God, you never want to come to this area.
See, I never read anything on Facebook, I just saw, I saw the cars, cause I was coming home.
Yeah, that's how we, we saw them. They were pulled over when we came back, but, I mean.
We didn't burn expecting all of it, saying that.
I know, it's like, what is going on? It's too close to home for me.
Down by the pool, that moved, where they put the wall up, their new house. Um, over, there was a cruiser parked there with no lights on and.
That same night?
The, the other night.
Oh, really? Or at least I'm well protected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or not?
Had a lot of foot chases and, and things.
Okay, um, let's see, so, uh, we talked about with the assessor last time to break down. Um, and I, I was accurate, I, I wrote it all out for her, said, it's, did I interpret this? Um, and I, I was accurate, I, I wrote it all out for her, said, it's, did I interpret this correctly? She said, yes, you did. So it's still an ongoing, it's, it's, it's gonna be, I don't know how we're gonna fund this, uh, cause it's gonna be costly. Um, and you'll see in the budget when we go over it, it, the money should have been budgeted. Like, two years out last, you know, much more, it got, I know it got exhausted, um, with one of the situations we had. But um, a lot of this was unexpected and not budgeted for, so it's just kinda, so I'm trying to streamline it and get answers and. Figure out the best way to.
No, this is unwanted.
The reap.
The reappraisal for the town. Yeah.
Well, and then how much, we have X amount of money in the reappraisal account, right?
Right, but not nowhere near.
Yeah.
This.
Well, it's one of those things, kinda like the fire department floor, we don't have.
We don't have the money, we don't have the money there either. To grasp for straws, so, um, okay, I already talked about the grounding, um, let's see. I talked about putting the flyers out, um, the mace property, and I did verify with them. Cause there was concerns with the oil tank that they're burning and that it wasn't one that they left and they said, no, we removed the oil tank, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that, I knew that for sure. Um, and I don't know if I have to get the state involved again, call them just to say I wanna make sure what's being done over there is.
Yeah.
You know, like kosher and uh upsetting things or causing more.
Well, aren't we on a like no burn?
Yes, I have to do what's coming.
Yeah.
You know, the thing is, if they're burning in a container. That then it gates my authority, but still, I can go and speak to them and say you're in violations of, there is.
Right.
No ban for the sudden forecoms, still in effect till November eighteen.
Right.
You know, and I can talk to them about uh, the material they're burning.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, if it's anything outside of ordinary untreated materials, they have to have an air pollution permit.
Okay.
And I can report to, they have seven environmental enforcement officers in the state.
Okay.
Okay.
And uh, I can report to him, file a report that they are burning, you know, this material.
Okay.
Which they can't do.
Right.
You know, and what they usually do, because there's only seven in the state, then they reach out to the local fire ward to go and.
Okay.
Pictures and.
Right.
Investigate for them if they can't.
Okay.
And that's kinda what Josh has already done, I mean with.
Yeah, you know, so.
Seeing into pictures.
Other than catching them in the act, it's like.
Yeah, I can rent a ticket, you know, but again, the ticket is for open burn, that's in the container, if they're using the, the drum.
Right.
But again.
Depends on how much they're throwing into it too and what it.
Point though.
Yeah, that's not permitted, and there is a ban open.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
And I can call the fire department and uh.
Okay.
You know, if they're doing that.
Yeah.
If I was, put this all.
Right, okay. Yeah, definitely. Okay, um, so snow plowing, we're starting to think about, they're getting antsy to get those fire trucks out of the garage. Um, so, um, we, we know, at least now we, they have salt and sand right now to get them through if something happens for a while, so now that we've got. A salt contract, that's good too, um, but um, I do have one person coming in Thursday to meet with me that put an inquiry about the position that's open. Um, but other than that, we really haven't, we've had people inquire, but then nothing happens. So I'm just gonna look at other options, if we were to get storms, is there people out there that we could outsource to, just to do some plowing? You know, if we needed to, like if one of the guys happens to be sick, I got two guys.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
No, that makes sense.
I don't have any, get an interview with somebody that's.
Um, I'm, yeah, meeting with somebody Thursday.
Before there be any other firemen that have got. C D L to react with some of the trucks, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I could ask.
But really, a lot of sucky power with smaller trucks. So, last time when we outsourced, didn't we?
Yeah, um.
Well, one of them had a C D L, but I, I don't think the other one did.
Yeah, and even this person I'm look, doesn't have one, but that'd be fine for now, cause they can do sidewalks and all the other stuff, you know?
Yeah, sitting down with the water.
Yeah.
Why do you think you need to go back and, um, the date when you guys were out? What was the timeline they were gonna be done, if they, you know, could go ahead?
They were gonna work next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, well, probably Tuesday, Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
So then two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, and it was like the forty-eight hour turnaround time before they could park it.
Now, will they scan that again after they filled it all in?
I don't know, I don't think so.
That's surprising, we think they'd wanna see what it looked like if they had done. Yeah. Yeah, you'd wanna, you'd think like, you know, like, oh, I think the void is here and it's this, and then all of a sudden like. They filled it and there's.
Right.
Nothing there, that just, it seems.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, I understand that, but it just seems like, I understand they don't warranty it, but. Without doing that, you have no idea what they really have.
They should provide that, I would think they should provide, you know, after the scan.
Yeah.
This is what was.
It's two different companies, two different.
The scan is one company.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, we've got E C I and we've got the.
The grabbers are different for running the scanners.
Grabbers can hire a new scanner.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden the grabber's now sixty-two thousand dollars.
I think a perfect room, the fire department's looking already.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, they're already on top of it.
We don't live in a perfect room. Um, I did reach out to Chris Turner on Newton Street, uh, to see if he had a report to share. He said, just a preliminary one, which had a lot of personal financial stuff in it, which he could redact. Um, but he said if I wanted to wait for the final one, so I said I'd rather wait for the final report and I asked him if he had a timeframe for getting that, so. Um, and there is issues inside the house, I believe, with his pipes, but what's happening outside, I don't think he.
Sounds like someone's here, isn't it now?
Well, I haven't yet checked the door.
Oh. I don't know, sounds like you're, sounds like you're a visitor, okay.
Okay, um.
So I like keep going on and off, I don't know if that's a motion light or. Yeah, it's true. Yeah, I just keep going off and on.
It's funny, cause when I leave at night, it's on forever, I'm like, it takes like. Yes.
So, timber harvest has started.
Just let me go first. Um, yeah, timber, um, cutting started, um, October twenty-eighth, um, I drove by the site, um. And um, I had, I printed pictures, I went down, they're not there, so, I don't know if it doesn't print for some reason, but he's been sending me pictures. He's already sent me the second request for their second check, cause they've been moving so quickly for payment and stuff, and uh, they're doing a great job.
Have they been hauling logs out?
Yes.
Keep seeing this.
Yep.
You know, logging truck driving up there.
It's funny, cause when I went up there that day, as I was going up, a logging truck was going by me with logs, and then at the veterans thing, I don't know if that you were here then. The logging truck went by that day with more logs, so they're, they're hauling it out of there.
It's right on the top?
It's right, yeah, right where they stopped paving, and if you go there, it's right on the left. Yep.
That's great.
Okay, uh, I'm getting estimates for the tree removals, we really don't have a lot, we have like one on Gorham Bridge, that's kinda big and old. That needs to come down, and then I asked them if they could just look at the rink, because we never budgeted for those. Um, not taking trees down, but the limbs, the limbs are huge and they're just dangling. So they estimated those in there too, so I have one more contractor coming to give me an estimate.
Right.
So, but, and I think that sits.
Questions for Judy? Alright, now it's the fun, horse drafted the button, uh. Third, uh, department's thirty through thirty-six, so.
We, you can't negotiate.
Oh, the, Department Thirty.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta make cuts somewhere, if you have to.
Yeah.
The thing is, is it's, it's hard, because I'm, we're planning for fiscal year twenty-six. And if you do it on what's, if you do it on everybody here currently, it's a totally different budget. Then if two years, we have totally different staff, and they're all taking a family plan. You know, like, right now, they don't have insurance, I'm a single, I'm not even on the insurance anymore either. So no one's on insurance, where you hire all these replacements and they're all on family pa- plans. You're talking a budget of a lot more money.
Yeah, venture is gonna have what, eleven point nine percent?
Ten percent, I think ours did, M V P.
They had said thirteen and we were at eleven.
So it is, it's a guessing game and you've just gotta try to pad it where, you know, the only good thing is if like. People are replaced, then maybe the salary line can come down.
Right.
You know, um, the thing is, I want to make sure like.
Retirement.
Right, I just wanna make sure, once we get like hi- like highway and stuff, that, uh, the people get a raise, cause.
Well, that was something that we were using, the ARPA funds.
Yeah, yeah, and you know what, even if I gave everybody a five thousand dollar raise, you're using like twenty-five thousand dollars of the ARPA funds.
Right.
So I'd like to have some of that padding of that funds for the.
To fill this vacant position, so.
Well, you look online and there are so many public works, highway positions open, everywhere. Alright, so I don't know if anything popped out at you guys, if you have any questions, if you wanna go just through each department?
No. No, I mean, I didn't, nothing, these are kind of law departments, there's not a.
Law department.
Yeah, well, I mean, there, there's not a lot of wiggle room within these, I mean, yeah, they're pretty much, um. Tight with, um, you know, direct labor and things like that.
Yeah. It's just.
I, I am surprised that their elections doesn't have to go up though.
Well, it depends on the year.
No, no, I know, but I guess that, that's the state charges us to do the machine or whatever to. Um.
Uh, and I think it goes off voter, like, like this year, the presidential election.
Yeah.
Lots of people voted, you know, the next election, maybe not that many is gonna show up. You know, like when you have the local election, nobody's, you know, I mean, it's, the numbers.
How are elections, can we just jump to the, the list there's one, you know, that one, it's just, I just can't get a grab.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I said.
That one, you know, and, and I look at the stuff that Lisa has sent us.
I know.
You know, and well, the first thing was, you know, is the reappraisal fund, it would be nice to know how much we have in there.
We have.
Well, it says right there, you have forty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That was budgeted in fiscal year twenty-four, and fiscal year actual was twenty-six hundred.
I think we have, I wanna say thirty-seven hundred, thirty-seven five?
Thirty-seven thousand or?
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
You know, but, but the, the, the leases, because that was budgeted fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
Budgeted that about, the actual only turned up with twenty-six hundred, so that made me think, well, what's in that budget? You know, and that's the same thing proposed for the current budget year, you know, forty-five eight twenty-five. And then we're gonna ask for thirty-five, and I didn't know what that sum would be. Is that gonna be the sum that's gonna cover Tyler, or that's gonna be the sum?
Anything that's tied to the reappraisal, other than what's gonna be their salaries, cause that's in a different line item. And then some of the I T stuff too.
So wait, after you budgeted forty-five thousand dollars, you only put twenty-six hundred in because you spent it where?
The twenty-six hundred is going towards part of this cost that had come up this year with this reappraisal.
No, 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 but he's saying that you budgeted forty-five thousand.
Right, for this coming year, for, right, for July to next year.
No, F Y twenty-four, it says.
Budget fiscal year.
Oh, I see, okay, so that was last, yeah.
And you only put in twenty-six.
Okay, so that budget was prior to us.
Well, you know, but.
The twenty-six hundred was, I, anything that was spent on this reappraisal, the summer of this year.
But it says actual fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, when I.
Correct, that means what we.
What was.
Oh, that was spent.
Yes, that's what was spent.
So the forty-five was in there then, gotcha. That was what I thought you meant, that you budgeted forty-five and you only put in twenty-six, that was what I thought you were saying. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, that's what I'm asking, was that put in, why would that be actual put in of forty-eight? Or forty-five eight twenty-five?
Cause we didn't spend that.
The actual is what you actually spent, the line that says actual F Y twenty-four.
Okay.
Is expenditures.
I can assume that we did put.
Forty-five, and we spent twenty-six hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, so that means, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought that meant, but then when you said it, I was like, maybe, I don't.
Okay, so, so that's how we come up then with the thirty-seven five probably?
Yeah.
Because fish years.
Right, and there could be, yeah, you won't, exactly, and, and these things have been coming, you know, like all of a sudden. The um, conversion, you know, we've all of a sudden gotta pay the new, you know, to do the conversion, thirty-eight hundred dollars.
And with the put money in funds like that, you, they put it in, um, quarterly, I think after.
Yeah, and, and we put it, we, we only get like six thousand, I think, from the state.
Yeah.
Every year, um, but we also, I couldn't take it out of like I T, because I T wasn't budgeted that high.
Yeah.
So I had to come out of another line item.
I mean, it's really not even that much for postage and envelopes, when you think.
Well, I know, she.
I mean, oh, would she bump that up to a thousand?
Yeah, she said that, I went over this with Lisa.
That, that's a huge jump.
And she said, yeah, cause there's gonna be things going out mailing this because of the reappraisal.
You know, and then the other item, that line item there, assessor services, when I read, you know, uh. Her contract that we signed.
Right.
You know, it says that, uh, forty-six days times, you know, two hundred eighty-five, so that was thirteen thousand one hundred. That was the contract for.
The assistant.
This will year twenty-twenty-five. You know, and that, but that didn't include.
You're looking at contracted services right now?
No, assessor.
Oh, assessor services, okay. Okay.
Her twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
Check, she said that she was gonna be, you know, uh.
This is her and Karen, there's two people.
Yes, this is her and that's.
And Karen, yes.
And there's Karen, and that's probably where the nineteen.
Yeah.
Six.
And it actually came in lower, I think so far, it's lower, but.
And, and that was gonna be the same for fiscal year twenty-six, so I assumed that was gonna be for the normal operation of the office. For normal business.
Correct.
Associated with the bird, with the appraisal.
Right, but.
Wondered is, were that money, because in her.
But they're not really doing.
On eight-six twenty-twenty-four, she said, uh, you know, anticipated and estimated costs. And she says, uh, you know, these are things that we're gonna have to talk about, assessor hours, estimated fifteen thousand dollars for that year. Twenty-twenty-six.
Right.
So that's nineteen-six plus fifteen thousand for her, and then plus the money for Karen or. What is?
But she didn't put that in here.
No, it, well, so, the, the problem was last year, she didn't go over the bu- she didn't do the budget with me, she said she doesn't do budget. So I wasn't aware of a lot of these costs that were coming fiscal twenty-five.
Well, it's fine.
And she didn't either, I, right, she didn't either.
Where that money is in this one.
So this nineteen-six is covering, cause we overbudgeted for la- this fiscal twenty-five, for, for fiscal twenty-six, the nineteen-six should be accurate. But since then, I sat down with her last week and she gave me another estimate of what she'd like, basically, if they have to bump up hours to do the reappraisal. And make more money per hour, and I'm like.
Why would they make more money for all?
Well, she said it in this, in this memo, a hundred five dollars an hour.
Just cause that's what they wanna do, so I don't know if that's a separate conversation in a.
I would say.
About a contract, like in a executive session.
I would say, we're building the budget, I mean, i- if that's an expectation and it's not in here, I mean, then it's not gonna happen.
Well, the contract that Tyler isn't even in here, and that's eighty-six thousand dollars.
Ooh.
Well, that's what's coming from the reappraisal.
Yes, that's what I.
Right, but we're short, forty thousand dollars.
That's why I thought we needed to really sit down and come up with some.
Right.
Actual numbers.
Yeah, well, I just got these, like, last Friday, I think or Thursday, so.
So maybe we can invite her to the next meeting, and we can do it at the top of the meeting, the executive session.
Right, so what I'll do is email all that to you guys, so now, like ahead of time, so you have all her emails and stuff and the two scenarios. And it's really hard to follow, going back and forth with this conversion and needing new computers and new desks, and it's like, you know. We just, we don't, we just don't have that luxury, you know, if, if a new table. We just don't have that luxury, you know, if if a new table's needed, you've gotta use this table until, you know what I mean? That's what we all do. It's like, you don't go. We can't just.
Yeah, we're talking about, you know, software. She's saying on this eight-six twenty-twenty-four memo that she sent us.
Yeah.
You know, because we're still using Pro Bow, you know, we're gonna switch to.
Right.
My catalyst.
Yeah.
She says, you know, our budget, twenty-eight hundred dollars, you know, but that was in the current budget here.
Right.
Twenty-five, and I don't know if we budgeted that. When I look at, you know, the uh computer services and I T. It's only a thousand eighty.
Yes.
But in this memo here, she says that, you know, it's, you know, just for keeping that, and you have to keep that service.
Well, I think the best thing is to invite her to the next meeting.
I agree with you, that's.
Yes.
Because we don't have her figures in front of us, so better to have her here and. Get a a real accurate picture.
And if she could break it down, this is for the normal office. Expenses and this is related to the reappraisal.
Yeah.
Cause if it's not in the budget, it's not gonna be. Okay. And department thirty-four, professional services, I mean, you're really kinda locked in.
Yeah, and the only thing, reason that went up is because they did a um. Special audit this year, uh like a one on a one uh grant, one bond, and so that bumped up. The cost of the audit.
And if we bond, we'll have to do that for.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, so.
All right.
I know, you look at it, go, how could it go up that high when all we did was raise one thing, you know what I mean?
You don't have, you you don't have that many, so one.
Yeah, it's like.
Five thousand dollars makes that look like a big deal.
And I did have somebody come today to give us a quote on a closet out there, because everyone else is following through, so. Um, and that's already in the building improvement fund, so that's covered. We don't have to worry about that, so.
Okay. Well, that budget looks fine.
Yeah.
I mean, these are really just kinda first look, but you have the whole thing and see a number unless there's something significant people are.
When you get to the end.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you, you know, there's big savings on that telephone. Was that because of result of? The switch that you made to the new system and?
Well, right now.
Has it been?
Uh, right now it's probably costing us more. It's been a ni- it's been a nightmare. Total, a total nightmare, yeah.
Well, I saw that and said, whoa.
Yeah, it's taken well beyond what I wanted it to ta- I I was thinking a month tops. It's been what, six months? It's been. Going back and forth, getting portals, getting billed by both companies now.
Yeah.
People charging us fines because we got out early. We should have never entered a three-year contract and now they're saying, you know, okay, we're two year two, it should be reduced. And they're charging us more and it's. It's, I think, the the we didn't have internet down at the wastewater plant because they didn't, when they unhooked the uh portal for the phone line. They unhooked the um D S L, so there was no internet. Then consolidated, said we can't hook it back up because it's grandfathered and we no longer provide that service, therefore we can't hook you back up. And we said, well, you act, you're the one that disconnected it. We didn't want it disconnected. We only wanted the phone disconnected. They said, oh, no, we were told to disconnect it, so we disconnected it. So then we had to go through another Fidium to do it. They went down. Hooked everything up and then said, oh, there's a break in the line somewhere. We have to bring the trucks down and a contractor to figure out where the break is in the fiber. So then they got that fixed, so they finally, I think. And then they said, oh, we'll see you there Tuesday where we'll meet the guys. I said, we're off. Or Monday, and I said, we're off on Monday. It's a holiday. So. They they were there today, I think, because they called me and I was with the guys up there and I saw them at one of the pump stations. Um, and so I think he got hold of Kyle to.
It is amazing how they can just flick it and turn it off, let's say if you are delinquent, but to flip it up and turn it back on is quite the process.
Right. Yeah, it, yeah.
Just some very problematic. All right. Well, the planning commission kinda offsets the.
The whole budget?
The muster.
I feel like there's no.
Twenty-five up, twenty-five down.
I mean, look how much we budgeted and what they spent.
Yeah.
I just don't, can't justify bumping it way up again.
Well, and I think that economic development thing, I mean, I don't know. What's come, you know, those kinds of things that.
Right.
You are using those monies, so. At this point in time.
Right.
We need to use those funds in other places, I think.
Okay.
All right, well, um. So next meeting, we're thinking, what? Are we gonna have like highway? Are we gonna big budgets? Are we gonna have?
Um, yeah, I wrote it down, um. I was just gonna go through the rest, because um we have Parks and Rec meeting next week.
Okay.